Ladies and gentlemen, to the side of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation of the ground, and in this world with the great interest of our own.
A motion to approve the agenda for the September 10th, 2024 Board of Education meeting as presented. By Laura.
Second.
Second by Cam. All in favor?
Aye.
Abused. It passes. We go into our recognitions presentations. Thank you to Turner.
Yeah, so for the second year, we're really glad that Turner Construction, our guys are here tonight. They sponsored our welcome back breakfast. We had everybody back for opening day. So we've been amazing partners in all kinds of ways, whether it's on the construction side or the community relations side of things. They sponsor fund runs and, you know, the Bulldog Dash and all that kind of stuff. So they really incorporate themselves as a part of our community in important ways. And what they did for us last Tuesday morning to provide the breakfast for everybody to come back is just another example of it. So thank you, guys, for what you do and for that in particular. So I'm grateful.
Thanks, guys. We go into our external audit presentation reports. Sarah Dean.
Hello. Good to see everyone. In front of you, you have a bound packet with this presentation, which is also on the screen. I will just go through that presentation. The details supporting it are all of those other items behind it. So our deliverables are our auditor's report on the financial statements. We're issuing an unmodified opinion, which is clean opinion, that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Two other reports included within the financials, one in accordance with government auditing standards, also called Yellow Book standards. We had no findings there. And one in accordance with uniform guidance because you received federal funding in excess of $750,000. That threshold's actually going up to $1 million in a couple of years. I think likely you'll still remain over it, I would assume. But you're at about $2.8 million in federal funding for 2024 as opposed to 2.9 million in 2023. You're deemed to be a low-risk audity because we haven't had any findings when we've tested your federal grant funds over the past two years. It's a two-year look back. So we're only required to test 20% of your federal expenditures. We tested the special education cluster this year, which represented about 31% of your federal spending, and we had no findings and no question costs with that testing. We will file a data collection form. Actually, technically Christine will file it. We will help file it. We will upload it with the financial statements once they've been finalized and approved. There's an extra classroom activity, schedule of additions and deductions that is included within your packet as well as your student club activity. So you have a number of student clubs at all of the schools. And you can see the balance at year end was about $262,000. You've got just over half a million dollars going into and out of the clubs during 2024. So we do test some of that club activity and look to ensure there's controls over how that money is accounted for. So we've got an update to a prior management letter comment on that this year, but all positive in the current year. And then we have a communication with those charged with governance and a management letter, and I will go through those right now. The required communications letter, really nothing of real significance or changed from the prior year here. So there are certain things we're required to communicate to you during the audit. Those are all detailed within the letter. But our responsibility in that we opine on your financial statements. The scope and timing was as it had been expected and as we previously communicated. We are independent, which we're required to be in order to perform your audit. There were no changes in the accounting policies, so there were no new accounting pronouncements that had to be adopted this year, which was good because we've had some in the past few years. There are estimates within your financial statements, so not every number can be tied exactly. It's not an exact science. So the main estimates are your capital assets, so the really the useful lives of those assets, how long you depreciate those over. Your accumulated sick and vacation time, also called compensated absences. Your pensions, that's the teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement systems. Those are based on actuarial calculations that you receive from the state's actuaries. Other post-employment benefits or OPEB, and that is the estimate of the future benefits you will provide to employees at retirement for health insurance. And the estimates also of what you need in your reserves. So we then tell you to look at the significant disclosures. Seven, eight, nine really mirror where all of those estimates are. Note six, short-term liabilities. I just included that one this year because you did have a $28.3 million bond anticipation note that you issued during 2024. So that's just another item that I wanted to point out. That's for your capital projects. It discloses the maturity, which is May 2025, and the interest rate. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. We had no disagreements on implementation of standards. Any adjustments we had were recorded. Truly, the business office does a nice job, so our adjustments really were minimal, mostly reclassification. And then the adjustments to take the fund basis financial statements to the full accrual financial statements that are required within your audit, which is mostly those pension and other post-employment benefit actuarial adjustments. There were no circumstances that affected the form and content of the auditor's report. We get written representations from management at the end of the audit. The only thing we're waiting on is one more legal letter to come back from your attorneys. Once we get that, we will send a representation letter to Christine, and she will sign and return that, and then we can officially finalize the statements. And there were no other significant matters, findings, or issues. The next page summarizes your management letter. If there's been any material weaknesses in your internal control, we would have disclosed those to you here. There were none. Another, I think, major point is we had no new comments in the current year. So these comments are all really just updates of prior year comments. Last year, we had a comment on your extra activity, extra classroom activity clubs. There were a number of inactive clubs that hadn't been used in a couple of years and whether or not you still needed those or that money should be transferred to the student council. All of those were transferred, and then you had a club whose records did not match the student records, didn't match the central treasurer's records. Of all the clubs we tested this year, we had no issues with any of that. So all clean. We had a point in the prior year. These next two are kind of funny because one's about having too much fund balance and one's about previously having too little. So in the food service fund, child nutrition, the state education department requires that fund balance not exceed an average of three months expenditures within the food service fund. Of the 32 districts we audited, I think 32 have a comment because they have too much fund balance because of the COVID funding you've received. So you did do a nice job using some of that fund balance during 2024. So our point is just to continue to use it. It's an update of last year's point. And then in the general fund, as you recall, we had had some comments over the past couple of years about your fund balance being low in the general fund. So we were pleased to see an increase of about $3 million during 2024 in fund balance. So at June 30th, that balance was $3 million higher than it happened in the prior year. Few informational points are some new accounting pronouncements. Governmental Accounting Standards Board statements, 101, 102, and 103. Two of those are effective next year. The financial reporting model improvements are effective for 2026. I don't expect any of those to have a significant impact on your financial statements, so I may mention them next year as far as a slight adjustment to how some things disclosed, but I don't see any significant impact on your statements. Moving forward, thank you to whoever's changing it. Next is the summary of fund balances. So going through the general fund first, and I'll start at the total, so we'll see that $8.4 million in fund balance at June 30th, 2024, as opposed to $5.4 million at 2023. That's that $3 million increase. Unassigned fund balance should not exceed 4% of next year's budget, so yours does not. It is at 4.4% at that $3.3 million. You also reduce the assigned fund balance used to balance the subsequent year's budget, which should help your fund balance numbers as well. So that's about $1.2 million. And then the difference for the increase went into reserves. So you have the capital reserve, you can see, has funded $1.2 million. I think that reserve was created back in 2016, authorized for, I think, $10 million. I think you previously put in and used maybe $1.8 million. So still available room if you want to fund that reserve more. Employee benefits reserve is for earned sick and vacation time payouts. And the retirement contribution reserve is for payments to the teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement system. The special aid fund, you can see, has zero fund balance. That is how it should look. So you can only spend what you are authorized to spend on those grants. By difference, if there is, you know, a shortage, then the general fund would cover it. Or if there's an overage, then that amount is due back, so it should always net to zero in that fund. The capital projects fund has a $16.4 million deficit. That is really just an accounting function based on that short-term bond anticipation note of $28.3 million. Once that's converted to a bond, that is recognized as revenue into that fund, and then it will offset that deficit. The food service fund, I mentioned, that child nutrition is suggesting that balance be reduced, and you did reduce it about $162,000 this year. The debt service fund went up to about $500,000. That was due to a premium you received on the band issuance as well as interest earnings on the cash, which is required to be used to pay the related debt. And then finally, the miscellaneous special revenue fund is really just some scholarships and some PTA contributions. They are all accounted for separately in that fund. So by difference, you're at a $5.9 million deficit in total when you look at all funds, keeping in mind that, again, you have the ban, which will result in revenue when converted to a bond.
Remind me of how that works again. I have to do this every time.
Yeah, it's so weird. So bond anticipation notes, short-term debt, are recorded on a fund basis as a liability. But when the bond is recorded, because it's long-term, it's recognized as revenue. So if you issue a $28 million bond to replace that $28 million ban, it will alleviate the liability and recognize $28 million in revenue immediately.
So at some point in the future, so this will continue to deplete. At some point in the future, we convert it to a bond. This will effectively be zero or something close to zero.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll see a revenue increase respectively.
Yeah, so there will be a huge switch in that balance whatever year that happens.
But that'll be, so it's gonna grow, that deficit will grow as we continue to issue new bands.
When does that happen?
In May.
In May?
Yeah, the bands, the bands are one-year bands.
Okay.
So what we do is then borrow, you know, whatever the anticipated capital needs for the year for the capital project, we'll increase the ban by that much. Like last year, it was 13.3. Then we borrowed basically $15 million for this year's portion, and we'll do the same next year. And by May, we'll send that out and issue.
So basically, every June, it looks like we're in a deficit, and then May it comes back.
No, it's gonna look like that until, because that ban is just going to increase until we're done. Basically, the way I think about it, because it's what I do, is it's basically a construction loan.
Okay.
So we only pay interest on that until the project is done. And then it goes out into a long-term bond.
Got it.
To Sarah's point, then it becomes a long-term liability, and it's something that's paid over whatever.
Oh, they just project is financed for $65 million or something, so I think that 16. So it will probably continue to grow to about that.
So to Mary's question, just so I understand it. So that $16.436 million will continue to grow year after year as a deficit until we issue the bond, and then it switches, it comes in as revenue, and it switches the negative to a positive.
And we are not scheduled to get that bond until this May?
No.
No, years later, actually.
Once the full year's work is done, right? Once all the work is done. And then also, I think you still have a little bit of time, so you can kind of make sure that the timing for the mark to go into a long, to lock into a long-term bond is the right time. And we have consultants that work with us to do that. It's not just something. We just kind of pick a date. You have consultants that.
I just wanna make sure.
Professionals that help us make that decision.
I can understand that. That would be a good starting place.
How'd you do? You all right?
I'm trying so hard.
Okay, moving on to the general fund only, so this is general fund revenue. You can see there's, after a lot of fluctuations the past couple of years because of COVID, it's actually nice to go back to really pretty consistent charts again. So no major fluctuations here. Property taxes are up, but you're within the tax cap. State aid, you did have some additional general aid and BOSI's aid in the current year. Sales tax is up a bit as well. And other revenue includes interest and investment earnings. So you did, as rates continue to go up, you continued to earn more on your cash balances. So an increase of about 5.7% in revenue year to year. The next page, then, is general fund expenditures. Again, as part of your process to increase fund balance in 2024, you did actually reduce your expenses in the general fund by about $941,000. You can see salaries actually went down a bit. You do have, you did have some teacher and administrator retirements. So that decreased your salaries, offset by some contractual rate increases of your other employees. Retirement systems, that's your contributions to TRS and ERS. Those are set by the state, those rates every year. Health insurance, you are self-insured. You didn't have an increase in claims during 2024. Payroll taxes and other, so that includes payroll taxes, which will fluctuate based on payroll, but it also includes unemployment, workers' comp, and some other items in there as well. Debt service, you can see, went down about half a million dollars. You did have a final, you're almost, have almost repaid a 2011 serial bond. That matures or matured in July, just after year end. So your last payment in, second to last payment in 2024 was about $1 million less than the previous payments. So you saw a big reduction from that, offset by interest you paid on the ban during 2024. BOSI services will fluctuate year to year based on services requested. Transportation and other, transportation actually did go up a little bit. So it's really other that's driving that decrease. You had decreases in supplies, conferences, utilities, and some other contractual expenses during the year. Again, I think some purposeful cost cutting to help bring that back up.
The BOSI's decrease is a bit surprising. So is that, I mean, you mentioned it, but maybe that's a question for Colleen. Like, is this because we're using, we're consciously using less services? Or is just the situation has sort of driven this, just the demographics of our case?
There were some administrative services that you've had, I think, in '23 that you didn't need in '24. It wasn't instruction-related. I think it was, I feel like it was business office-related.
So I think when you're thinking BOSI's, too, you're thinking just our students with special needs and placement, and it includes others that we get from BOSI's as well. So some of that stuff we purposely went through and reduced.
So that's a result of the cost consciousness and not a trend we should expect because of our.
Correct. Not a direct connection to our students with special needs.
And it's worth noting that as we went through, we went painstakingly through every single line item of that BOSI's budget. We were also careful to cut things that, we'll focus on things that didn't drive aid in the following year. Because not everything is aidable, so we tried to make sure that we left stuff. We didn't leave anything we didn't need, but, you know, cutting stuff that didn't drive aid is better than cutting stuff that does, because, you know, you want the aid in the following year. You don't want to hurt your revenue for the following year. So that was a part of the picture, is to reduce the expense as much as we could while maximizing the revenue that we get in the following year from our BOSI's expenditures.
Understood.
Christine reminded me, too, there was, there were expenses for the capital project at BOSI's that you had to pay, and that went down in '24.
Oh, I forgot about that. Yeah.
So that was.
The one that we get to approve but not really approve.
So moving on from the fund basis to the government-wide basis. I feel like I go into way too much detail on pension and OPEB here for years. I'm gonna try to keep it out of the conversation in detail. Current assets, $29.7 million. Majority of that number is cash and investments, about $23.2 million. Because of the timing to of the ban, you had a lot of unspent ban proceeds at year end. You issued it in May. So that makes sense. And then capital assets, you can see, went up about $13 million. You had $16.5 million in additions during the year. Again, most of that is related to your capital project, offset by current year depreciation of about $3.2 million, net to that $13.2. Pension, OPEB, and deferred resources. So if you look at the actual statement of net position within the financials, those pension and OPEB or other post-employment benefits numbers show up all over that statement. They show up in deferred outflows of resources. They show up as net pension and total OPEB liabilities, and they show up in deferred inflows of resources. So I just netted all those numbers into one on here to keep it simpler. There was an adjustment year to year. Again, these are all based on actuarial assumptions. And then those differences are amortized over a seven-year period. So with all of the investment fluctuations over the past couple of years, and really their estimates of where investment earnings would go versus where they actually went, there were a lot of things sitting in there that are amortized over a period of time, causing that net number to decrease to that $2.9 million from '03 positive in 2023. But again, these are all actuarial assumptions. You're making your required payments to the pension systems that they ask you to make, and those are the numbers you saw on the previous page in the general fund. Long-term liabilities, the change is there is just due to current year principal payments on your debt. Other liabilities, you can see there, again, the increase because of the ban from the 13 and something to the $28.3 million. So net position on a full accrual government-wide basis, pretty consistent year to year, it's $1.4 million increase to $35.4 million. That bottom part really just tries to show you how your net loss on a fund basis becomes net income on a government-wide basis, and we've really already talked about it. It's really just the expenditures on your capital projects. On a fund basis, those are expenses in the capital projects fund. And on a government-wide basis, that's an asset that's depreciated over time. So you only see a piece of that in the current year. So that's really the main reason for that difference and the adjustment of the debt as well. The next page really just explains everything I just said there. That's just the wordy explanation, probably less wordy than what I just did, but that is it. Any questions on any of that?
So just to summarize, because there's been conversation over the last year about districts' finances. If you were to characterize the work we've done over the last year to improve the district's finances, how would you do that?
I'd say it's a really strong improvement. I think you're headed in the right direction. All of our recommendations from the prior year, you are implementing and working on. I think you knew they existed anyway. It wasn't news to you. But yeah, I think this was, this is a good audit and good financially trending way you should be going.
I'm just amazed you found nothing in those extra classroom accounts.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Sad, first time ever. First time ever.
It's pretty rare that we can turn, so we'll have a look harder next year.
And the thing about, the thing about the extra class for folks that don't hear this report all the time, so that's not our money. The extra classroom accounts are all the student money that's collected and spent through all the clubs. And by law, the kid, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but by law, the kids, they sign off on the expenditure. You know, there's a treasurer in the buildings that writes the check. But it's all the student stuff. They keep the records. There's an adult advisor who helps, and they all do a wonderful job helping them. But it's really kid's stuff, and a part of it is their opportunity to learn, and they're gonna make mistakes. But when the mistakes happen, it shows up on our audit report as a finding of some sort. So because it's all kid's stuff, you know, every year, there's a finding. So, but we work really hard because we're still responsible for the money, and there's a lot of it. So, you know, is it Julie at the middle school who does it?
Yes.
Julie Aktul. She does an amazing job with Kathy and Christine helping her. The advisors are all over it, too, and the kids do a great job. They take it really seriously. But to have all that happen and no findings is, it's good. It's nice.
It is rare.
Do you have any suggestions for us going forwards? Just, I know it sounds like we're doing great, which is great. Anything that we think, you think we need to keep an eye on?
So that's what we typically have, you know, a number of things in that management letter. And we really didn't have anything new, other than, you know, obviously continuing to focus on fund balance and increasing the general fund fund balance and decreasing the school lunch fund fund balance.
Okay.
Eat more lunch.
We spend it down.
I do my best.
Get the supplies and things that we need, which we did last year. Got a lot of good things.
We'll continue to upgrade the equipment, stuff like that, Brad, to Joe and Shane. Those guys are all over it, so.
This is maybe a better, a better question for y'all. I don't know that you have this insight. Are there any peer institutions that are managing that fund well, the lunch fund well, that we could reach out to and ask how they're doing that?
Although we're not managing it well, I just think it's hard to spend it down when the federal government keeps sending you tons of money.
We audit, I think it's 32 school districts in Western New York, and I think every single one of them has that.
Oh, okay.
So it's not unusual, and it's strictly really because of COVID and all of the additional federal funding that came in as a result. So it's kind of a short-term problem.
Yeah.
But, so it's typical.
And we can't move that anywhere. It's stuck in that area. Okay.
And I'm glad you asked the question, though, too, Mary, because what we've been doing is we're gonna buy new equipment, so we're gonna manage it by spending it. And the other ways we're gonna spend it is by buying some of the equipment we need in all of our kitchens.
That would be great.
Improving the lines and the appliances and some of that stuff. So I'm glad you asked, because that's one of the things we're gonna do over time.
Anything that doesn't require a payment. Right. Thank you so much.
All right. Yeah, well, I think that one thing that, you know, as you noted last year, and it was the first time we ever saw it, because I've got it, I've got it in front of me, that you warned us that the district will no longer have funds available to appropriate, in the fact that this year, we, you know, done a 180 on that. I think that shows the, you know, the strength of the financial planning and management in one year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then the board briefings, basically the meeting, the minutes from our last meeting. Just have a couple information items at our desks here. Future board meetings. Next month will be the 8th, and I don't see where it is, because I'm not.
It's not in there.
It's not there. There it is.
I have it at the high school.
At the high school? That's where I thought it was. I was gonna say, we start next year, next week at the different. Upcoming meetings, workshops, there's some NISBA stuff in there. ECSP event, Dr. Kim's, Thursday, October 17th. That's, I always find him entertaining and insightful. Do you know where that's gonna be today?
It's dinner. I want to say it's at the Collins.
It is.
No.
Just our informational budget transfers. Moving on to board committee reports. Start with our student rep.
Okay, so we had our first, or no, our first in-school meeting is, because we had our end-of-school, like, going into summer meeting in June, but our first meeting of the year is actually tomorrow. So we're gonna like finalize homecoming stuff and just like vote on a few things that we need, like, everyone to vote on. And then we worked the snack shack last Friday, and it was raining, but like, we still did pretty good, despite like it raining. And then our next game is Thursday, so the night of a Bills game, but it's okay. We're not getting real lucky this year, but it's okay. But yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay. When's homecoming?
It's the 4th, and then the dance is up there.
Okay. Thanks. Mary?
All right. We had our transportation meeting. Was very. All right. We had our transportation meeting. Was very illuminating. I really enjoyed meeting with everyone. We went over emergency and accident protocol reviews, closure protocol, how the ridership is going. It was really nice to hear that Fisher Bus like practices their emergency protocol, how they practice it beforehand. We talked about what they're gonna do for home, for the Bills home game. They talked a little bit about the software upgrades that they're getting, which is great. I'm delighted that they're gonna be able to track their buses a little bit better, which I'm sure every parent is also gonna be really happy about. But that is, that is not a this-year thing. That is a next-year thing. But good to know. And just talked about what ridership looks like. So, looks like the elementary routes are basically full to bursting. And for those of y'all that were with me, let me know if I missed anything. But, but not at capacity. They were all full, but not at capacity, which is a good thing. And I also talked a little bit about my favorite topic, electric busing. And people had really good questions about how we can make that work, how we could not make that work, what were the issues. So I vowed to look into some of the concerns. I was also really pleased to learn that Fisher Bus has had an energy audit, and they are looking into getting that solar canopies done for charging stations. Obviously, that's a long-term project. So it is in the back of their mind. Obviously, that is a long-term project. On our mind, there's still a lot that needs to go into that before anything is really gonna happen. But I'm just was glad that it is starting to be discussed, and we are asking questions about how we could possibly do this. So I think that is happening. That is the transportation meeting. We have yet to have a technology meeting, but that will be on the agenda for some time later. And UPES is having their back-to-school social on Thursday. You should come. It's gonna be a banger. That's what I got.
If you're not at the bug area.
I'm saying, do you, I mean, I'm going to the social.
Yeah.
You might be a good one.
You don't have to live under the tyranny of war. It can be an end.
Right. It's a beautiful.
Time is to be a bulldog.
I was at the transportation meeting, very excited that Mary was there. So she, she did a good job reporting on that. You know, we also did the, the capital project tour, which we all did. And it was, it was great to see the auditorium and everything else. I tried to show Jess what the new seats would look like at Charlotte, but the doors are locked here. But if you just peek into the auditorium, you'll see what a big change it is. And everything is just so impressive. See the guys still working when we're in the rooms and everything. And it's just, you know, it's just exciting to see all the improvements. Other than that, the PTSA meeting is until next Monday. The first legislation meeting at Erie County School Boards Association is next, next Thursday. And so don't forget to join the music boosters. Liz and Sue are here. They can show you how you can do that. And the Bulldog boosters also don't forget. And also, if you want to buy a raffle ticket to win a Bills ticket to the Titans, that is also out there. Just click on the QR code. That's all I got.
Also went on the building tour. Nice to see kind of things starting to wrap up. A little bit work to do on the art rooms, because those are a little bit more extensive than some of the others. But it was good, good to see. And work's been done. It looks fantastic. I'll also be in ECSP on Thursday, because there's a budget meeting that day too.
Oh, there is? So is that at 6:00?
Uh, 6:00, 6:30, I don't know.
You're telling it next Thursday?
Usually they back them up.
Yeah, yeah, September 19th, and our meeting is at 6:30 legislative.
Okay. All right.
No updates.
I was at the tour and the transportation meeting, so I don't have anything to add.
Yeah, I was at the transportation meeting too, but Mary did a great job, so
She did.
nothing to add.
Actually, wait, how many people were at the?
Wait.
Transportation.
How many of us are?
No, wait, I wasn't that one.
You were at the facility.
I was at the facility.
Disregard.
You've done a good job.
I don't remember you being there.
I was counting that up too. Most of my, most of my committees have not met yet. We have a parent-child connection coming up in a couple weeks, maybe two weeks from now. So looking forward to that. PTSA, we haven't had our first district meeting yet or building meetings. However, lots of the schools are doing their back-to-school events. Union Pleasance is next week. Our Charlottesville was on Friday. Armors was Friday. Lots of good things happening there. Lots of excited kids and families back in the schools and in the school community, which we are loving. Reminders, if you didn't get your PTSA membership yet, there's still time to do that. If you've gotten more than one membership, thank you as well. Our schools are also going to be kicking off their fun runs soon. As a reminder, those are the one and only fundraisers for most of our buildings. Together, they raise almost $100,000, and it goes to support lots and lots of things, from scholarships for graduating seniors, teacher mini-grants, extra funding for field trips, putting items in the tinker tank, and the school-wide events that they put on in all the buildings. So if you have a chance, you're always welcome to donate to those fun runs, or come check them out, because honestly, the kids just love them. So I'm hoping to, after our PTSA meeting, get the dates out to everybody. So if you want to check out one of the really fun things that's happening in all of our elementary schools, we might be able to get a few people to a few places potentially. What else? I know we're gonna hit on it at the next meeting as well, but Charlotte Avenue was recognized as a national PTSA school of excellence. Yay, Charlotte. This isn't a new award for Charlotte. They've been working on that. Like, that's been something that's been ongoing for about the past 10 years. But it is, it is a big thing. It's a big acknowledgement. And I know we'll hit on that again in a later meeting, but I wanted to bring it up because it was very, very recent. And then we were also acknowledged at the town board meeting last night. So just another PTSA fun thing. All right. Cam and I are also in the building visitations committees. Maybe looking, can we maybe get something looking like October, November, we could start discussing for one of the buildings?
Usually.
Did you guys try to do schools you want to go to?
I think we're talking Boston or.
Well, we did, we did Armor and Charlotte last year.
Yes.
So I think we said Boston.
Boston and maybe middle school.
Either the middle school or high school.
Yeah.
Boston. And why don't we do?
We should do Boston closer to Christmas.
Okay.
Elementary schools are fun at Christmas.
All right, then just the high school in the spring.
That one, the fire is good.
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
So, Brandy, you sent a doodle out for some days for December-ish at Boston Valley?
Sure.
All right.
Great.
All right. And that's all for me.
Okay. Moving on to capital project update. Construction guys?
Construction guys.
Construction guys.
Construction guys. So glad to hear that the tour went relatively well. I saw a lot of spaces that are either done or getting, getting to wrap up the summer one, phase two. Just a couple quick points on the report itself. Just, we are gonna continue doing work where we can. Basements outside on mine, for most part, by finishing up those spaces we committed to for summer one, which you guys saw. We broke out some of the milestone data here, just some of the odds, finishing up about 1,000 more, because there's some resents, some lighting and some, some other finishes. So we did need a lot of those lighting products later today. The content we're seeing in Boston and Armor odds should be, those dates are very close too. Charlotte, so we got a few pieces, but that's one that you can see some further out. Financials, just phase one is pretty much locked in. It's the same number we saw last month. This is probably just all off to just being a total committed cost of final, final cost of working. And then change management, a big change here to phase two. You see it's just some of the weight changes showing up. Big number there for the value of 600,8,000 is coming from us resolving that issue with the electrical contractor, getting that into a full, full contract value. So that's the main piece. So you're seeing showing up some weight.
Sorry, can you, can you point to that?
Yeah, so under change management.
Avoided changes.
Potential changes.
Okay.
The void number went up drastically in support, but that's mainly because of contract value that was being reported for the electrical contract.
We go to that list.
Right.
Last one.
Change of touch gender, which is base contract value effectively.
Thank you.
We are yet to start dipping into any phase two contingency, which is great. And you can see, we did start small amounts of dipping into allowances on the contracts in this last, this last couple quarter, very bottom left side there.
That's good. Like, you expect to burn your allowances.
Right.
Like, your contingencies, you're like,
You're gonna see those.
you'd like to those to not be burned, but.
They usually do. We'll see the allowance start burning, I think, more in the next month or so, but don't know whether so far. So going into the slides real quick, I think I saw a lot of these spaces yesterday. High school stage, first project, when that rigging system into play is about 90% there. Lights are all hung. We're just waiting on some final curtains, new curtains to show up, come up with the lighting itself, and then that, that space will pretty much ready to use the whole time. The screen coming in as you move behind the curtains, the projector.
So that's, that's in time for all the events, for the plays and musicals.
Yeah, I had a good chat with Mr. Raffino the other day. We were just kind of walking and talking. And as a professional theater guy, he's excited for what we did in there. So it's gonna be great for them.
Yeah, so that looks great. The pictures on the bottom, there are just a quick before and after from the bathroom fix. So that was a pump going into the ground. It's gonna help make that bathroom work hopefully forever flawlessly. And the ground restored there on the bottom right after the pump and life arrest all. Keep going. So that picture is actually, the top two pictures there are from rooms in the high school. So we're looking at, we did a relatively completely completed room 151 on the top left. We'll be reviewing the flooring in there at some point when we get an opportunity during school year to really freshen that space up a little bit. Top right is room 140 in the high school. So we took this room, that's one off, and put the new brand-new flooring in it. You see metal case work in the back of the picture there that's going in, which was really great for that room. A lot of rooms down that side swing in the 140s versus second floor.
The significance of that, of that renovation, because we took it all the way down to the studs and, and put it all back together again, is that's more or less a prototype for what we should expect to see classrooms look like as we continue renovate. You know, we stay on our five, every five-year, you know, referendum, do work, referendum, do work, or is planning a project, doing a project. You're gonna see more and more classrooms look like that at the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools. Not all at once. It's gonna take a long time, but you know, the journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step. In terms of renovating just regular classrooms, like a math classroom, that's, that's the first step of that, of that journey. And it's generated a lot of attention at the high school. People were excited about it. It'll take a while, but people can see what it's gonna look like if we continue to process and modernize our schools. We've touched almost all the public spaces, and now we're getting into the classroom spaces. So it's been an intentional process. And it's maybe a sign of progress when you see that kind of prototype.
Continuing on the bottom left, there is one of the music classrooms. You see they got some additions to the project. There's obviously flooring, the brand-new boards up on the walls, the sound baffles in the new ceiling, LED dimable lighting. These rooms are basically just lacking the casework that went along with the project and the sinks and the complete. Top of this page is the Armor odd. So a little bit before and after when the seats were in, the guys were working on the flooring there. The shot looking out with the flooring done and seating done. Projector has been installed. The screen and all the lighting required to finish that space up showed up today. So that one will be coming online fully in the next couple of weeks here. Bottom two pictures are again a before and after of one of the music rooms. This is Armor's, I think, right? It's a larger one there. Again, we're finished minus final, some final caseworking things coming in mid-October. And this is the last page. So we're looking at the Boston Valley odd, basically completed top left. This one is just in the punch list suite, as we call it, some just touch-ups to some minor aesthetic things that we want to improve on. And that space is effectively done. The projector screen will up. The upper right is Boston Valley's music room. Again, complete minus some, some casework and sink that's gonna go in when it arrives in late October. Then the bottom two pictures, you see it before and after what was kind of just two, two empty rooms in the Boston Valley Elementary School, now transitioned into the new nurse's suite. Again, that is largely done minus some casework that's gonna go along the window there. Just see the September cover on for the, that space particularly looks great. And that's, that's about it. It's just an update to the schedule. We had a little bit detail again, just a couple of schools wrapping up in terms of the summers work. But otherwise, that's, that's just, that's a day that's gonna show up pretty soon.
Any questions from the board?
So just to wrap up some of the things you're doing and waiting on, you know, the casework, plumbing, obviously ongoing work in the art room. You're looking at, at wrapping those up by the end, is that kind of an end of October, mid-November kind of timeframe?
In November, late November. I, I think it's gonna be pretty sure you got, caseworks due shipping the 26th of October. It'll take them probably a couple nights per space. This impacts all the art, all the music, Boston Nurse. So that will extend out a couple weeks for this to get all ready to finish. And then there'll be just a couple days of work for plumbers in behind, just taking sinks in and cleaning up, basically, and then doing punch list. So reality is, you'll probably see us finishing those spaces entirely over Christmas break. Might be touch-ups, break, probably crunchless work.
Mm-hmm.
But casework should be in, in November.
Okay, thanks.
The other space dragons, just really Charlotte odd. That's, again, just all the new lighting. That, that's the one that got a full revamp of all the theatrical lighting system.
I think it's important to note that, I know this is just, you know, an August-September report, but by looking at a lot of these things, you can tell that we spent a lot of money on the music departments and rooms and facilities. And I think it looks fantastic. You know, so definitely needed. And I think the results are, you know, incredible. You guys did a lot of great work.
I still love that tile work we saw yesterday in that bathroom, Boston Valley. That was so.
Right. The kids and the teachers are going to really enjoy it, you know, once they get in there.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We're moving the superintendent's entry plan to next month. I'm ahead of those, those expectedly taken away.
Just working on something.
So that will be on the October meeting. Our report for our superintendent?
So just a few things. Opening day was great, like getting everybody back. You know, it's a little different because nobody came back until Tuesday after Labor Day. So we already got an extra week of summer, which I think people are pretty happy about. You know, we spent a lot of work, I spent a lot of time working together as a team in the summer. I'm looking at Danielle, the administrators. We did three days together as administrators, followed up with everybody. You know, just having everybody together, it has that kind of buzz of a family reunion that first day when everybody's back. So that was really nice. And, you know, people were just happy to be back, you know, they're with their work friends and doing the work that they really love to do. So that was just super fun for, for me and for everybody. Summers, you know, there's no kids and teachers in the summertime. So, I mean, I love coming to Brett and everybody, but you know, at some point, let's, let's get rolling with, with, you know, the kids and the fun stuff. So Tuesday, kids came back. That was great. But just a ton of hard work. The administrators, building the grounds, tech, I'll forget somebody, but you know, everybody who works so hard in the summer to make sure schools are ready to open. Transportation really went pretty well, I thought. You know, hiccup here or there. We had a couple of bus breakdowns, but that's something, we controlled the controllables. And, you know, stuff you can't control happens sometimes. But all in all, you know, this is day four of kids, and we've had four really good days. So thanks to everybody for making that happen. I love the decorations at the high school as I walk through there. So it's awesome.
Clothes chains were worth it, but this is a labor of love.
Yeah.
Clothes chains.
It is obvious, because when I walk through there, it's lovely.
I don't want to take them down.
Yeah. See if this cradle actually leave them there for a while.
We're gonna use those for Christmas.
All right, good.
You might want to change that Christmas walk-through to the high school.
Oh, is that right? Oh, is that right?
I think she took offense.
That's twice we offended her.
Yeah. But just opening day, great. You talked about the tour for the Capitol Project, thanks for coming. I'm always grateful when you guys take time out of your busy schedules to do that kind of stuff. I know everybody's got a lot going on, and just, you know, as for the improving financial picture of the school district, that doesn't come without a lot of work, a lot of teamwork, a lot of just thoughtful, purposeful, short-term decisions, long-term decisions, long-term planning. So, you know, and the trajectory, not only are we in a good spot, but the trajectory is important. We've got room to go still, but we're on a very, very positive trajectory. So grateful for everyone who has played a role in that. The 23-24 budget that we just finished was a really important budget for us. And obviously, budgets going forward will just continue to help us be healthy financially. So just happy and grateful for where we are and where we're headed financially as a school district after what happened in the business office a couple years ago. So just wanted to make mention of that and say thank you, that's all I have.
So I got. Okay, moving on to business items for tonight. First, we will approve the consent and financial items in one vote. At this time, any board member can make a request to withdraw a specific item from the consent agenda for individual consideration. Is there such a request at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve all consent items, F2 through G9.
Some move.
So a move I can. Second by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes, moving on to the action items. H1, can I have a motion to approve a school resource officer agreement effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026?
Some move.
So a move by Laura?
Second.
Second by Ashley, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Can I have a motion that based upon the recommendation of Superintendent Michael Cornell, the Board of Education accepts the audited financial statements for the 23-24 school year?
Some move.
So a move by Rich?
Second.
Second by Cam, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item H3, can I have a motion to accept the updated letter of retirement Superintendent Mike Cornell, effective December 30th, 2024?
Some move.
So a move by Cam, second by Dave, questions, comments?
The, I thought we weren't updating that yet.
No, we just changed the date.
We're just changing, this is just the retirement date from the 31st to the 30th.
Just a one-day difference.
It's a one-day difference.
Retirement system requirements.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item H4, can I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes an amendment to the contract of the Superintendent of Schools, Thomas Adams, covering the period December 31st, 2024 through June 30th, 2028?
Some move.
Move by Ashley?
Second.
Second by Rich?
On the question. So in my work, sometimes it can be a hassle when you have one day of employment in a new job in one year, and then the rest in another year. For the record, in the minutes, can we get confirmation that that's not gonna be the case with this position?
What do you mean?
I just wanna make sure that there's no, like, sometimes you end up having to pay double FICA, or your insurance changes and somebody gets screwed and double insurance, or.
Change into 2024 to 2025, right?
Right, because technically, he's gonna have one day where he's employed as a superintendent in 2024, that doesn't burden us some additional fee that we aren't foreseeing.
Good question, but I don't think so.
Oh, yeah.
I would assume it would just be the.
It's usually when you start a job, like, if you start a job, and then you have to pay your FICA for the year and everything.
That's not gonna mess up his health insurance or anything?
No, because it's just transfers, because he remains an employee, so.
I just doesn't make me, now you got me thinking about it.
Yeah. It's, like I said, usually it's when you start a job, and technically, he's transferring shit in our walls, so, yeah, it'll be all right.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item H5, can I have a motion to approve the contract between the Hamburg Central School District and the Summit Center? So a move by Laura?
Second.
Second by Cam, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item H6, can I have a motion to approve a contract between the Hamburg Central School District and Canisius University?
Some move.
So moved by Ashley?
Second.
Second by Laura, questions, comments?
This is, this is training for staff, right? This isn't services for students directly. Is that, am I reading that right?
So, some is for students directly, and we are also allowed to have some professional development through, it's Dr. Tormir, so he works through Canisius University. We've had a long-time partnership with him. So where it says consultant services, number three?
Yeah.
That could be for a student, that could be working with a student, working with a student, working with a staff member, both of those could be consultant services.
He's a really, he's a, I've worked with him for, I had him at my middle school when I was a principal, and he will do all that stuff, like, he's, he'll work with a kid and a child together, like, he's just amazing partner to have.
I'm familiar with the name for a couple different reasons, so.
He's great, so, yes.
It just, it was just a, so I just wanted to make sure, like, it's a high, a high rate, right? High billable rates, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like en masse, we were sending along. Well, I didn't wanna make sure that that's not the case, I wanted to make sure I was clear if that was the case, that this could be a large commitment, but. All right, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Any other questions, comments? I don't know how long it's gonna take me to get used to saying Canisius University. All my stuff at home just says college. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item H7, can I have a motion to approve a contract between the Hamburg Central School District and OLV Human Services? By Laura?
Second.
Second by Ashley?
This is for social work? It's kinda cool, tell them about this one. Yeah, some of our work-study kids will work at Missouri's Bakery. Missouri's Bakery is owned by OLV, so we pay a fee to have our kids go there. They go like once a week, there's a. They physically go to that building and bridge it. Yeah, like, they were, during Easter time, they did the Missouri's booth in Broadway Market. I went to visit them there, so it's all my friends in 219, but I went to go see today. So it's a good day today, got to hang with my buddies, but yeah, it's for those guys.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Last of our action items, moving on to persons addressing the board. Just as a reminder, some topics are not permitted to be discussed in public forum. For example, any topic related to an employee, or that can be implied to be related to an employee, special education placements, individual student situations, et cetera. If the topic is inappropriate for the public forum, the board president will instruct you not to speak, or rather present your concerns in writing for the board's discussion in the executive session. We have one speaker, Kelly Brem.
First, I'd like to request that the board bring back the microphones. It's really hard to hear, even in person and when I join online. Second is about classroom sizes, so during a lot of discussions during the layoffs periods, we were assured that classroom sizes would not get significantly large. However, now that the school year has begun, I hear from students at the middle school, that is not the case. There are several classes that I am aware of, as an example, that are very large. Technology is close to 30, lab in the middle school is over 30. So I'm upset about that. And lastly, I wanted to hear the details of the contract amendment to Mr. Cornell, but I see that that's been removed from the agenda. So I will just state, as I already stated in my email communication to you a few days ago, I ask the board respectfully that you clearly inform the public if you're still considering any amendments to the contract, if there are any financial implications to the district, and the justification for such, given our financial situation. Thank you.
That was the only person signed up to speak. Having no other business, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
So a move by Cam?
Thank you for sharing.
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.